Okay. I need a motion to open the board meeting?
I make a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 21st, monthly meeting.
I make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to accept the claims and treasuries and financial reports?
Show them.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I have audience communication of any agenda item. Please feel free to come up to the podium. And that's a no. No? Yes? Not sure. Okay, moving right on. Now, we have the external audit report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first, I want to thank Charlie and Tina and Karen for all their help every year. It's a big undertaking going through the audit process. I met with the audit committee a few weeks back. We went over everything in detail, so I'll give you guys a summary view of how everything went. Your financial statement audit, you have an unmodified opinion this year. The highest audit opinion you can receive means that your financial statements, in our opinion, are fairly presented. There is also a government auditing standards report in the back of your financial statements, and that speaks about internal controls, and if there were a material weakness, which is the highest, most pervasive, or a significant deficiency, less than a material weakness, something that would be identified. If they were, if there were any, they would be there, and there are none. There's no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies to report. It also speaks to compliance in other matters, and there was nothing to report there as well. You did have a new GASBIE this year, again, but I think, over the next couple of years, you'll notice, there might be a lull, and we'll get some reprieve there, but this year was GASBIE 96, which was subscription-based information technology arrangements. So, they were considering your, what they would consider a lease only in your subscriptions for IT services, and those are now on your books. It had minimal effect. Nothing very, very large went on your books this year. You will see a change in accounting principle prior period adjustment with about $8,000, nothing really significant. And, you know, the biggest things are your changes in your valuations from pensions and other post-employment benefits. They're flip-flopping again with their inflows and outflows based on market fluctuations. Other than that, it was status quo. Your extra classroom audit, also an unmodified opinion, with a separate management letter for you to review. Any questions?
One question. Because of one of the changes, there's an additional audit that needed to be done? Was that done?
Additional audit? Not an additional audit. It was a consulting arrangement that you guys hired for the GASBIE 96?
Right.
Yep. So, we have a separate team, completely separate from the audit team. They do help and assist with the implementation of those, because it can be very, very extensive.
Okay.
So, they did help with that, and there was two separate, I don't want to call them reports, but there's, you now have a listing of those items, and that can be rolled forward and, you know.
Great. Thank you.
Use subsequent years.
How many school districts do you look at on Long Island?
On Long Island, we have probably a handful. Five on Long Island, we have 70 across the state.
And how do we compare in general? Are we above average?
My favorite question. You know, usually you got, usually I get asked, "What grade are we?" And here's, here's, here's what, here's what, where you are. You are an individual district in, in the state. You know, you, you're at your 4% fund balance. You really can't compare district to district. You, you are unique in your own budgets, you're unique in what goes on in this district. So, you know, you are where you are at your 4%, you have, you know, some reserves that you've been building.
She's also a politician.
On the net position, Table 2A, the pension asset went from 17.6 million to zero. That's all just the surplus being eroded by investment performance or a change in accounting standards, so it's not classified there anymore? What's going on?
That, you have no control over, over that. That is market fluctuation, and as, you know, the liability and asset change, so goes the market.
Right.
And then you have those wonderful things called deferred inflows and outflows that you see, that they kind of house those big changes in there, so that they don't hit your, your statement of activities all at once, because it does fluctuate year in and year out as to what you may owe, or they may owe you, based on how the pension does.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Have a good weekend.
You too.
Okay, we're up to the superintendent's report.
Had a lot going on since we last together, but I am going to start with the mentioning of, the passing of two past staff and faculty members here, Matatuckahog District. The first is the passing of Mr. Bruno Brauner. He was an assistant principal and principal from 1972 to 1979, and he was assistant superintendent from 1980 to 1988. When I first started here, he, they were still telling a lot of stories about him. And just, he was a, he was quite the figure, very well-connected to students, big man. You know, can be a little imposing, but had a great relationship with those that he worked with, and especially with the students. The other is the passing of Mr. Richard Brooks. He's an earth science teacher. He was also a volleyball coach, and then after his retirement, for years, he was also AP exam proctor for us for quite a few years. So, quick story about Rich. When I first started substitute teaching here, he was our science teacher here, and I was sitting with him at one point in time, and he was telling me about the importance of school community, and getting involved in the school, and just the whole aspect of school community. I'd never, no one had ever had a conversation with me. That's not something you learn about in college or anything like that. No one talks about that aspect of it. And Rich did, and it's, it stuck with me, you know, it was an important thing, and something I learned, you know, in my time here at Matatuck, so I, I thank Rich for that. So, just wanted to mention the passing of those two gentlemen. We had a successful spirit week here. It was definitely a fun week for our students. It just kind of felt really good to be back. We had a great Tucker Bowl. Tremendous thank you to Andrew Nydeger and the SAD students, who put that together every year. It is the most important athletic event that happens at Matatuck High School every year. But I know Misha's going to go into that a little bit, but the, I want to thank the Matatuck Fire Department for putting on the bonfire, for our class pitchers, just a really super-nice event. Mr. Wormuth for helping coordinate that that evening, and organizing the lights, so, but and all the, all the great levels, the club advisors, and coaches. It was, it's a great tradition, and I thank them all for putting that together for our students. October is National Bully Prevention Month, and students and staff at Matatuck High School showed great support for Unity Day by wearing orange clothing yesterday, and Kachog East also participated as well. So, that was nice. October is National Principals Month, and I want to thank Mrs. Brennan, Dave Smith, the high school principal, and Heather Stewart, our assistant principal here at the high school, for their commitment to our district, students, and community. They are really tough jobs, and these folks really pour their, their hearts and soul into it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I've mentioned the month of October, here's a few items to go along with. I want to thank the Westnowski family for their generous donation of mums and cornstalks, which has been used for our outdoor pumpkin display, which was created by our art students here at the high school. Definitely.
Looks nice.
Yeah, it looks nice, and it gives a nice feel. And then with the orange shirts, we had a class contest.
Cute.
So, there were some great pictures out there in between the pumpkins and stuff with all the students, and they're orange, so, but thank you to the Westnowski family for their donation. The National Art Honor Society is beginning to work on the Memory Project. If you recall, this is something they did a few years ago, it was very heartwarming, where they create portraits of, of children, and then this year, they're going to be working with children from Syria, orphans from Syria, where they get pictures of them, and they actually paint a portrait, and then send it back to them, so they have something like that, which is, you know, a pretty cool thing to have. They'll be mailed to the children in Syria in January. We had an AP art student trip scheduled to go to the Met earlier this week on Monday, but we didn't choose to reschedule that trip, just due to the events in the city and some of the protests. It was easy to pivot, and so we've done so. That trip will happen, it's just being rescheduled. And Family Literacy Night was held at Kachog East on Tuesday. We had about 30 families participate, so that was great. Thank you for putting that together. And the Laurel Basketball Courts Restoration Project, it's getting close. We are, we're just a couple thousand away from getting that project done. We're really pushing to get those last, a couple more donations to come in, because we would like to get it done within the next two weeks, or it'll have to wait till the spring, because the asphalt plants are going to close down. So, we are making a push and hoping to get that done. We're very close. Also, in other news locally, we had discussed that the Pecana Community School would be moving into the old OLM campus, and then it seemed like it was postponed for a while. We've been in contact with the directors of the Pecana Community School, and they are scheduled, they anticipate opening their jurors by the end of January, early February, so we've been working closely with them, making sure that we're able to provide the services that they need, and so that they have a smooth move-in, and that we have a good relationship working with them going forward. So, it's been so far, so good, and we look forward to welcoming them to the community. In athletics, the golf team participated in the Conference Four Tournament for Leagues Seven and Eight on Monday, and were very successful. Andrew McKenzie qualified for the individual county championship and state qualifier, and the team also qualified for the next round of the county team championship, all taking place next week, so congratulations to Coach Elwood and those students. Our boys soccer finished in second place, and will play in the county championships first Babylon this Saturday at 3:00 PM at Diamond in the Pines. Actually, that'll be on the 28th at Diamond in the Pines. And our boys cross-country finished 2-2, and will compete in the division championships at Sunken Meadow on 10/24, and that's at 1:00 PM. Our girls soccer team finished 7-6, 7 wins, 6 losses. They didn't make the playoffs, but a very respectable season for the girls. If you recall, because of the combined numbers and the way the state was doing it, they were bumped up a classification, and really played in a very competitive league, and the girls really stepped up and played very, very well. The homecoming game they had against Shoreham, you know, we didn't have, we weren't too optimistic about that game, and the girls really played their hearts out. They were up 2-0 at one point in time. Great game, great season, so they certainly performed better than we had anticipated. And our girls cross-country finished in a three-way tie for the league championship with Port Jefferson and Pearson, and they will compete in the division championships at Sunken Meadow on the 24th at 1:00 PM. Our tennis team finished 4-4, and competed in the division championships on the 6th. We had an eighth grader, Anna Carter, and senior Marissa Ukulansky, were the only two Matatuck players to advance past the first round, so congratulations. Our girls volleyball team will be the number three seed and head to Babylon on the 30th for the first round of playoffs. And field hockey, if you remember, we opted to have some of our students participate in field hockey if they'd like this year, so they're playing over at Southold, and they entered the Class C playoffs as the number two seed versus Pearson, so congratulations to them. In the world of ROTC, they're busy as always with beach cleanups, their annual leadership training, drill competitions, and they recently went and visited the United States Coast Guard Station in Shinnikok. So, congratulations to the combined NS1 and varsity team for winning first-place overall championship title in the Area 4 North Orientarian Competition on October. The unit is waiting for the results of the Area 2 Orientarian Competition that they also recently participated in, so congratulations to all the cadets, and to keep up the good work. If you're not sure what orienteering is, it's the sport of navigation on unfamiliar terrain using compasses. So, I'm taking a course in college on that, up in the Adirondacks, and they put us out in the woods, and we had to find all these things just using a compass, and it was interesting. It's challenging, to say the least.
I would still be lost.
The unit is also a recipient of the 2023 Ian Wilson Community Growth Grant. This is a $1,000 award given to deserving ROTC units, and they will use these funds to initiate and expand their orienteering program, so they're into it, and they're enjoying it. Just some upcoming events. If you haven't gotten the email, the Kachog East Trunker Treat has been postponed. Do we have a date?
Yes, October 28th, Saturday, 5 to 7.
Okay, and that's due to the anticipated weather tomorrow night. There's a lot that goes into coordinating that, and the weather looks like it's definitely not going to be pleasant. Our SAD club students will be participating in mental health training all day on Tuesday, October 4th. This is a turnkey training that they bring to our other students. And the senior class will be participating in the annual Day of Service on Wednesday. This is where our seniors go out and do different organizations within the community, do a day of service, accumulate some community service hours, but really just give back to the community that gives them so much. So, on that day, our juniors are going to be taking the pre-ACTs, our sophomores will be taking the PSATs, and our freshman students are going to be visiting the Cradle of Aviation Museum in Garden City. So, it's a, it'll be a regular day for our junior high students and our elementary students, but our high school students will be out and about. A lot of coordination going into that. And we will have a district-wide family night, will be held on Wednesday, October 25th. This is the sixth year that we're holding these, these evenings that allow students to spend time with their families. Without school commitments such as homework or meetings in the evenings, there will be no tests or quizzes the next day. There is a flyer on the website for more information. I think Lucheritos is offering a 10 or 15% discount to any of our families that go there for dinner that evening, and provide them with a copy of the certificate. Our parent teacher conferences at Kachog East are scheduled for the afternoon of October 26th, and all day on the 27th. Kachog East students will have no school on the 27th. And the performance of our junior high play, Silver Secret, is going to be held on Friday, November 3rd at 7:00. So, if you're interested, come and watch the junior high play. You're invited to do so. And I do want to remind you that we, on February 3rd, we have the annual Longwood Regional Legislative Breakfast is going to be taking place, so if you let Lisa know that you're interested in attending that, and we will reserve some seats. The Superintendent's Association's gotten involved in that, and they're still in discussion about how we're going to bring some more student voice to that, that breakfast, which will be good, because it's been a little challenging in the past, so.
That's it? Okay, thank you, Mr. Petretti. High school leadership update and student recognition.
That's you. Okay, this is also School Board Recognition Week.
Thank you.
So, Misha has some gifts created by our students in our art classes for our board members, just to say.
Thanks very much.
How creative is that?
Offer some thanks for your volunteer service.
Good for Lisa.
Thank you, yeah.
Very nice, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Spreading that blue and gold a little bit. But again, I just like to remind the community, it's, you know, when you see some different things go on in different school districts, and you read comments and stuff, and folks, you know, their perception of what a school board member is, and so forth, I'd just like to remind folks that these are volunteer positions. They're elected volunteer positions, and it's, I'm very happy that we have a school board that really, I feel, represents different aspects of our community, and I think that that's important. We have some parents from both the elementary school and the high school level, a local librarian, you know, a past teacher in the district and community member, a local farmer who pays attention to the tax dollars at all times.
Some real man.
Yep, and, you know, a local businessman that's also very, you know, I'd like to say fiscally savvy, and is always looking out for the taxpayers and making sure that we're using those sources, those resources well. So, it just, it really is a good board to work with. The formal piece, you know, again, some of the key work of school boards, the goal is to really raise student achievement, and develop a shared vision of goals for the district, which you guys have worked at every year, continuing to do so, ensuring strategies, resources, policies, and programs that align with our district goals, assessing and providing accountability for student achievement, supporting a healthy school district culture in which to work and learn, evaluating the super incentive to ensure continuous improvement, and so much more. So, again, our school board members give the Matatuck, Kachog, and Laurel citizens a voice in education decision-making, and I think you do a really great job, and, and I thank you personally. We have Pat Arcelainian, our board president, she's been with us for four years on the board. Doug Cooper is our board vice president, he's been with us 29 years on the school board, he's presently serving his 10th term. He began in 95. George Haas, board trustee, he's been with us for five years. Jeff Conley, a board trustee, he's been with us for six years. Jennifer Anderson, one of our board trustees, she's been with us for five years. Karen Little Relo, a board trustee, she's been with us for three years, and new to the board this year is Lorraine Warren in her first year. So, guys, thank you very much, please serve us, we appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, Sean, I just want to say, I know we, I speak for all of us when I say, "It is truly an honor to represent this district." You know, it's, it's not always an easy job, but it is an honor, so thank you.
I would end that it's an honor to have the administrators and support staff that we have, okay, because they do the work. They just make us look good sometimes. And I thank all you guys. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Misha Ukulanska, and I'm honored to represent our student body as the president of Student Council. Today, I would like to share some highlights from the start of the school year, and then advertise a few events for this coming November. I'd like to begin with our biggest and most exciting news of the year, the new STEM Wing. Seniors Jack Goldar, Ella Worth, and Skylar Rowe have created a video showing the renovations of the wing, and some of the reactions from our staff and students here at the school.
Our STEM Wing here at Matatuck has recently undergone significant reconstruction. We spoke with multiple key players in this remodeling to see what has changed.
What I find is we're using the space more efficiently. One of the things I was hesitant to give up with the new design and shop space for classroom spaces, but I find I have more bench space in the shop, and more room in the classroom than I ever had, so it makes teaching much smoother.
The process started back probably a year and a half ago with our building's grounds committee, administration, and our architect. It took about six months to get all the pieces of the puzzle in place, and then started, the actual work started in May, the abatement of the asbestos, then the actual work started in June. Took about three, three and a half months to get it all ready for the students in September, which we came in on time and on budget with a lot of help from our W2 team, and also the administration, and they, they gave the product, which was what they were wanting.
I think the technology's been, it moves a lot. Safety is a huge concern on, and they have a lot more switches for emergency power option. It's a lot safer and more refined, and there's a lot more opportunities to succeed with the STEM field and technology.
The motivation for the STEM Wing project is really the result of the change in technology that's happened over the last several years, and the focus on STEM, science, technology, engineering, math, on top of the traditional technology courses that we want. This building, this facility, was actually first built roughly 50 years ago, once there was more space, you know, buildings, this building became open, and the technology teachers at the time, they made a push to make this where technology classes would happen. There were really little, to no changes in the actual facility. One shift did come from Mr. Roseback in the metal shop, called Downhill Section, and started a video production program in the late 90s, early 2000s. But besides that, nothing had really shifted in the physical layout of this facility, but the curriculum did keep shifting. More engine repair and welding became pretty popular, and Mr. Mincelli, he began to take on a lot of the engineering, had this stuff, robotics. Teaching so many classes in a confined space that wasn't really set up to do so was posing some challenges to the teachers, but was also a safety issue. We kind of tripped it over ourselves a little bit. We figured it was time to really upgrade the facility, so we dug the hole inside and reconfigured and updated everything, so that we could really match the space to the subject we wanted to teach. This project is important to Matatuck as a whole for a couple different reasons. One, it does keep us, you know, cutting-edge in the field of technology and robotics and the engineering. You know, you have a new space like this, it does attract students to the programs, and we have some very exceptional teachers teaching those courses, so this physical space can argue what they're doing and teaching, and their draw, you know, allows kids to look at that. Space is now matching the curriculum. You know, those guys are doing some great stuff, and now they have, you know, the space to learn. The other driver is smart work is going through a transition right now, where we're seeing a steep climb in, in population as far as families with school-aged children. We're trying to find ways that kids can learn later from Matatuck, but that still want to live down in our court and can make a good living. And some of those industries are carpentry, and kids can go into that, and the law, you know, everyone wants a little way to college, you know, so we want to find those opportunities. Because what was the engine repair? If we're teaching a small engine repair class, and that sparks an interest in the students to go and pursue marine mechanics, or maybe diesel mechanics, which are very high-paying fields, and they want a little way they're able to do so, which also supports our local economy, welding's also very profitable. Having all these spaces that expose students to these different things will hopefully spark an interest, which is what I like the programs are really supposed to do, and the lights sparking changes in the direction maybe students are going to take. That's why it's important. So, there's a lot of different things, make us cutting-edge, and just providing experiences for our students that could potentially change their lives.
Thank you to all of the teachers, staff, and community who have taken part in this important transition from Matatuck.
Thank you so much, Jack, Ellen, Skylar, for creating this. Senior fall has been the most daunting and uncertain period of our high school careers. Thinking about next year can be really scary and intimidating, but thanks to our guidance department, we have access to an abundance of resources to ease the stress. Late this September, Guidance organized a college fair for grades 9 through 12, where over 80 colleges and universities attended. Having the opportunity to talk to representatives from schools as far as California made me feel very fortunate. As one of the many students who have two parents who work full-time, I don't always have opportunities to visit colleges in person. It was a great way to learn more about the difference, different options for my peers and I. Thank you again to the Guidance Office for organizing this opportunity. Another exciting event that had just passed is the Tucker Bowl and Homecoming. This year, the seniors have once again won the legendary competition. Last Friday, the girls varsity soccer team put up a great fight against Shoreham-Wading River, however, they sadly lost, and the boys soccer team won their homecoming game 2-1 against Southold in double overtime. And to close, I would like to advertise two upcoming events. The Junior High Play will be November 3rd at 7:00 PM, and as a new addition this year, the cast will do a special performance for Kachog East that will take place on November 2nd. And finally, the, on November 9th, there will be a Wall of Honor induction at 9:00 AM in the library. The Wall of Honor was started seven years ago by Mr. Petretti, Ms. Bieber, and Ms. Cheryl. Currently, there are 144 plaques on the wall, and this year, we will be adding 14 new ones. That includes Mr. Jack Gibbons, a social studies teacher for many years. These are two events that we hope you can attend, and we would love to see you at. Thank you so much for this opportunity, for letting me share some important updates with you, and I'll be back in December for my next report.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yes.
Quick thing. So, while we're talking about items at the high school, we also had, nine of our students were selected for the New York State Art Teachers Association, New York State School Boards Association combination presentation, where their artwork was presented up, upstate as, as part of the New York State School Boards Conference. And so, we had nine students who were recognized, whose work was recognized, and who were honored at that, at that event. And so, we had, we did receive certificates for those nine students. I know two of them are here this evening, so I'd like to call them up and, and recognize them and present them with their certificates. Mr. Smith was going to be able to do this tonight, but he wasn't able to be here, so I said I'd step in and do them for him. So, the students that were recognized were Paulina Cubey, Amelia Sayer, Georgia Buckley, Alexandria Field, Imogen Blair. Alexandria Field, Imogen Blair, Marlo Calamore, Teddy Winter, Gretchen Acker, and William Maringer. So again, we talked about how our students have represented us so well on the fields and in different areas. These artists are doing a great job and will represent us on the state level, so thank you very much. You guys come up, I have certificates for you, and if we can get a shot, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you guys very much, congratulations.
Okay, we're up to the Board of Ed Committee reports. Audit and Finance, Mr. Conley.
Thank you very much. So the Audit and Finance Committee met earlier this evening. We discussed the audit report that was presented by Bonadillo Group. We also discussed the proposed changes to tax exemptions for senior citizens, people with disabilities, and firefighters, and the timeline for that is in November. There'll be a hearing at the board meeting and then a vote at the December meeting. Charlie, could I ask you just to give a quick summary of what that issue is and what we'll be discussing next month?
Sure. There are a couple of exemptions. One in the past actually has been changed by law was the disability, veterans' disability, which is actually changed already by law, so there's no change. They used to count the pension of veterans whenever they were disabled as far as the numbers, where they didn't in some other cases, so finally, the law's been corrected to not count that when you're talking about income. Two of the other areas is with regard to senior citizens. There's, what it would be is looking at the taxes that are filed in which all monies that the person has made throughout the course of the year would count or not count, depending on the way that you want, that's one of your exemptions. And then the other one is for the firefighters, that's a tax exemption. Originally, you would have to work five, you would have to complete five years of service. What the proposal out there is to get the same exemption, which is a 10% exemption, after two years of service. So it's one of the areas that they're looking at at the state level to reduce the number of years to hopefully bolster the volunteers that you get in these communities.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll have more information next month and then the vote in December. We reviewed the claims reports, there were no issues there. We discussed the basketball courts at Laurel, which Mr. Petretti covered, and also Pecana Community School, which Mr. Petretti touched on also. And lastly, just two budget transfers on the agenda. One is for transportation related to a special education placement at Bosie's, and the other is for asbestos training and inspection. So I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Ursalianian.
Thank you. Building Safety and Grounds, Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Pat. The committee met about a week ago, and there's a number of points that they went over. Part of it is the Laurel Basketball Court, which has been mentioned several times this week, tonight. Also upcoming projects for the five-year plan. Sean, do you want to touch anymore on the Laurel Basketball Court?
I think we're good, that, you know, we're real close and we're looking to move on in the next couple of weeks.
Very good. Upcoming projects for the five-year plan. One thing that's been bothering me for a number of years, you can almost say 30 years, is the, the face you're up here in front of the school, that every few years, and they come quick, we would have to scrape it and paint it, and it's just an added expense, and we want to do something more permanent that is going to be, should be more maintenance-free. It's an expensive program, and we don't have any, any plans yet on just how we're going to do it or who's going to do it, but that's something we will be looking at in the near future. Also, we're looking at air conditioning for Kachog East. That's, as the temperatures get hotter and global warming, that's something we're going to have to do. The high school tennis courts, we've been fixing every year, they, they crack every year, and we patch them. To do that, to replace them is going to be quite expensive. That's in a neighborhood of $750,000. And we have to decide what kind of a service we want. Do we want blacktop or do you want artificial grass? And they, they both play differently. We're also looking at some additional courts up in the northwest corner of the property that might do. The STEM Wing, which has come along, and thanks for Charlie and Tom Kelly, they, they have overlooked the project, and everything has come in, and there's been considerable We'll have a completion certificate coming in shortly. All the equipment has been purchased for it, and we're waiting the arrival and installation of it. And that's basically it, Pat.
Thank you, Doug. Curriculum, Technology, and Health, Karen?
Yes, our committee met on October 10th. In attendance were Sean Petretti, Karen Littarello, Pat Ursalianian, Meredith Allegra, Alana Finnegan, Lorraine Warren, Amy Brennan, and Lisa Bieber. Not in attendance was Mr. Smith. We spoke about the Pecanix Community School, which has been addressed already, as well as Family Night. Just a reminder, October 25th, no after-school activities or homework assigned except for varsity practices, and we talked about the Lucheritos. The third item on our agenda is the Champions After School Care for the pre-K. They're still looking to staff that.
We got an update on that?
Oh, we did?
Yes, they, they got permission from the state to accommodate those students in the other after-care program as well, so those families that happened late last week.
So we will have that?
Yes.
Okay, good, so they're able to accommodate them, perfect. November 7th is a conference day, so both buildings will be following the theme of excellence. The elementary school will share with staff the bully prevention program that was previously worked on over the summer with the Bully Prevention Committee. Coach Randy will offer insights and strategies on this topic, and the high school will welcome alumni Jovan Booker for their bullying program. We then talked about balanced literacy. Recently, literacy programs have been addressed across the news, and our committee was assured that the school uses various methods to address reading and word recognition. Some of the methods are the Hegony Method, which addresses phonological awareness along with words their way. As students learn differently, programs are designed here with the students in mind. We then talked about the MTSS Handbook, which is the Multitiere Support System. We were provided with this handbook to review and comment on. This handbook is a culmination of a two-year process. The committee put in many hours to prepare this comprehensive plan which meets New York State regulations for assessment and individualized student support. And then, of course, we spoke about the Carpentry Program. Currently, it is not running. Matituck will address that again next year here. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Negotiations and personnel, that's me. On the agenda, you'll notice, we have a new hire of a social worker and a lunch monitor. We're watching the cooking club and monitoring student participation to see if there's a need for additional staff. The Bosie's program has been addressed a couple of times. November 7th Conference Day, they'll be training all day for the Kachog East staff. High school faculty will, some of them will attend presentations on artificial intelligence, and there also will be the motivational speaker, Jovan Booker, who happens to have been a former student, and that's a wrap for that. Policy?
Yes, so we met last week. There are two first readings. One policy is the payroll procedures. It's really just an update to properly identify who's responsible for overseeing that. The second policy, alternate instruction, all these changes are state-mandated. It is being much more extensive in what the policy is addressing, but it's something that we need to do as directed by the state. So this is the first reading. Second reading will be next month.
Thank you. Okay, we're on new business. I'd like a motion to accept a donation from the Matituck-Kachog Elementary PTA in the amount of $7,000 to support field trips for grades K through 6 for the 2023-24 school year.
So moved, and thank you.
I need a second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and that's $1,000 per grade level. I need a motion to accept personnel items A through I.
Make a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolutions A through D, I need a motion.
Make a motion.
I need a second.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just A through D.
Yeah, because we're pulling A.
Yep, Charlie, I'm not going to assume you have these numbers off the top of your head, but just for the TAN, the interest expense versus what we have in the budget, could you follow up with the board on, on what that is?
Sure. The, the interest that we have, we, we ended up doing the TAN the same as last year where we divided, where we pay back. I believe the percentage that we paid was 4.17 and 4.35 on the two different TAN notes, which since we ended up getting it has increased, but we came within the numbers that we had budgeted for this year.
Okay, so no major change in that?
No, it's, it's a lot more expensive this year than last, but
That's how it goes.
Again, interest is also coming in on the other side, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion for letters F through L for resolution items.
Make a motion.
I need a second.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're on audience communication. Anyone who'd like to speak about anything not on the agenda are welcome to come up to the podium. Okay, if no one wishes to speak, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I need, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night. Karen, thank you very much for the Magic Free House.
Of course, are you kidding?
I'm very excited.